All right, so the budget, we will get a new version in two weeks or so. December tenth, we will have to pretty well have the final version.
You can decide whether to pass that or pass an interim budget.
Yes.
It's almost always been ready to adopt the actual budget, but I don't know if we've ever done an interim.
We have.
We have in the past.
Not my preference.
Could it be impacted by an ICF agreement?
It takes a load off of everybody.
Listen, it can't be lower, we should be climbing.
The winged bug, that's right. Can only be good.
Okay. Under BF, I asked Jeff to kind of express the issue here. In short, it has to do with a contract that the electrical department managed to get from Foremost. But in order to be able to do the job, they need to draw on the present budget. And in order to do so, we need a resolution. Jeff, do you want to do that right away, councillor?
I think it's pretty straightforward, so.
Okay, so you want to go ahead with the resolution?
I move that we expend an additional $80,000 from account 2-92-500, Electrical General Operating, cover the expenses, travel, et cetera, for the project in Foremost.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. Now, Jeff, do you want to explain a little bit what's happening there with NMAX and our department?
Sure. This came about, we had our kickoff meeting for our solar project, and NMAX is actually contracting us to do some components of this project. And it came up in the meeting if we'd be interested in bidding on the same type of work in other projects. And we said, well, if it's in reasonable proximity, then sure, we'd be interested. And then they came to us with this project, and we went and bid on it, and bought the bid. So we didn't go down there and spend about six or seven days getting the utility extended from the distribution line to the solar plant.
So that's an interesting kind of new source of revenue. It's actually a very nice way for the department to work with the electrical department rather than to be in public works in the winter time. That's good.
They're hired guns, we can send out of town, make some money out of it.
Are they actually planning on staying down there while they're doing this?
They're actually going to come home, they're about an hour and a half out, and work 10-hour days and come home at night.
Here's a motel.
And we can work with them, because we'll be locked up on site, and they'll just drive the truck home at night.
Then how much are we going to make again?
About $48,000.
That's actually probably a little bit more than that, I just wanted to make sure.
Decent.
I mean, that is the low end.
Yeah, that's probably the low end of the profit, I just wanted to make sure everything was covered.
Mm-hmm, decent.
So kudos to your electrical people for having searched for something to do.
Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah, during this longer time, it's just great.
Yeah. 6D venture review. Now Jeff has given us a little bit of a spreadsheet on the different items that are on a debenture. Jeff, the only thing that I need you to help me understand, and I can't find it now, but I'm going to shoot from the hip here. There are two figure of $11,000 in 2020, 2021, or something like that, I think. Can you help me understand why those amount are so low in comparison? The year after, it goes back up to a full amount. What does that represent at $11,000 at that point?
I'd have to look at that, I think it's one of the.
It's on the.
Yeah.
I think it's a solar in one of these buildings, so I'm not sure why they put it that way.
Can you try to help me understand this thing?
Yeah, yeah, I'll look at that.
Because, yeah, no, that's okay, I memorized stuff. So, yes, if you could help me understand this thing. Thanks.
Otherwise on this council, it was just something we talked about last year, bringing to the table all the debentures you have, just so you're aware. There's a couple of important clauses, there's a $1.7 million debenture by law for creek rehabilitation. It's a line of credit that we've never used, but it's still active through this year, depending on whether it was pre or then it will be closed. We've been able to cash flow those in the past, so we've never used it, but it's certainly there. And then what wasn't under audit at financial, but will be going forward now, is the solar farm.
Solar farm, yeah.
And the Gulf, we did the Gulf line of credit as well.
That's right.
This year, not last year, so.
Okay, so councillors, do you have questions?
So I'm just wondering what our total is right now, as of right now, is it 713, or?
So, no, because, well, since then, hold on to my calculator, it is.
I mean, we have three little beds worth of.
Yeah, I just wanted, it's my own curiosity.
Yeah, yeah, so if we don't count the creek line of credit, that we're not using it. We have approximately $200,000 of golf course that we're using. Again, the bylaws are much more than we're using. And then I just need to grab the amount from the solar one.
Two point, two point three?
Okay, so that factors in now that the solar one does.
Yeah, so.
You have to put it in.
2.775, 2.
Oh, I was at all.
We're seeing about 3.689 million.
That's what we're debenturing right now.
And the bulk of that is.
It's a solar farm, gotcha. So we're in pretty good shape then.
Well, and the solar debentures off here in a couple of years, depending on how we finally mitigate that little monster, but it's gone soon, I hope.
Well.
And then the other ones, your solar for this building, the ice rink and the solar farm are self-sustaining.
Self-sustaining.
Right, yeah, so we're doing well.
So then hopefully 1.7 million creek's gone as well.
Our debt load is manageable in the sense that it does not really tax the rate payer. And that is what we intended to do. That is a problem in other towns nearby. When you start to have a maximum of your, well, you know, I mean, honestly, it's true. If all your line of credit is taken, what do you do next when you need money?
Yeah.
Where do you go?
You don't get it. You get traded.
Nicely worded, Mayor.
What's our, what is our credit limit? Five, something?
No, it's more than that.
Twelve to 12,000.
But I mean.
We're not even, oh, yeah.
But.
We're not even a quarter, well, just about a quarter.
I wish to never go.
Oh, no.
I think it's 12, somewhere in that area.
Have no worries as long as you're the mayor.
Thank you councillor, I'll take that as a compliment.
You read everything, Mayor.
I'm sorry, I do read everything. All right, so we're on 6D, and we need to try to see if councillor Brown is available. So I, meanwhile, distributed to you to try to help you with the comparison a different way than the way.
Is this a good time?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, you're live. Okay, go ahead, Mayor.
Councillor Brown, welcome, and are you safe where you are, tell me? She's not receiving.
She's not safe anywhere when she drives.
You there councillor?
We lost her. So I would imagine she's driving and she's going to go. She's going to go in and out.
Yeah.
She needs to park her car somewhere.
You'd think that close to Edmonton, you'd be okay.
You'd be okay, yeah.
She can't be that close to Edmonton yet, if the roads are bad. Through Red Deer is real wild.
Pinocchio to Boden.
Yeah.
Stretch your road.
The corn.
We're just waiting for councillor Brown to give us.
You're going down to.
I'm here.
You going to dip or what? All right.
Exactly, bridge.
Okay, so we'll understand, if we lose you, we'll know that you are.
Dippy.
Dippy.
Nice.
Are you, how far are you from Edmonton, by the way?
We are just minutes from our hotel.
Okay, we like that.
Excellent.
Thanks. So we're going to start to talk about the remuneration policy. And I have distributed a paper to each councillor, unfortunately, you don't have it. But it is an analysis of the AUMA data that Jeff contributed to our discussion. So it has to do a little bit with the different graphs that he had. And so I'm going to give you the analysis that I have made of that because it might generate a question that will start us talking. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. So the first thing I would say is the honorary for council and CCW meetings are presently at $230. And if you compare it to the mean, that means they are 92% above the mean, which is $120. And they're 100% above the average, which is $115. If you look at the per diem half day, if you look at the per diem half day, right now it sits at $130, which is 12% above the mean of $116, and 30% above the average.
Okay.
If you look at the per diem, it is right now at $255, or 16% above the mean of $220, and 17% above the average as represented in a figure. So now if we look at the average annual remuneration per councillor, we are significantly below the mean, but we're just above the provincial average. So considering the three first item are listed, and the fact that we have more council meetings than the average or the mean in a province, we need to ask ourselves, what could be of this disparity? The only plausible explanation that I could come up with is A, the councillors are involved in more committees than we are. For example, in a county, each councillor in average is involved in nine to 11 committee assignments per month, significantly higher than the average in our town. Or B, the councillors are paid higher amount for their work on committees. And that kind of goes back to the saying that was going, well, when we meet other people from other towns, it always seems to be that they're paid way more than what we are paid for the same amount of work. So it always goes back to that outcome. So I thought that maybe what we should look at in order to try to see what we can do about this, should the quarterly for committee work be increased, and on which rationale? That's one question I have. Another question would be, should any committee assignment above and beyond the regular assignment and approved by council be strictly paid by per diem? And that would represent, for example, the work that you have done, the work that councillors have done, as just using you as two kind of councillors, that had many extra assignments come through this past term or the past two terms, the past two quarters, I mean. Another question is, should there be special consideration for subcommittee of a committee, such as IMP and ICF, or for example, Community Future is another, a subcommittee of South Gru, if we want to look at it that way? So subcommittees' assignment paid by per diem, should that be that way? What is the appetite of council to give themselves a raise at a time when the Premier of Alberta is asking us to exercise restraint at all levels? And then can we defend our increase if there will be one at the end of the day with a taxpayer in mind? So those are questions I pose, and I think it would be important to add the questions that each of you have around that topic, and then work at it and try to find answers that maybe will lead us to what changes need to be done to our policy. Are you okay with that?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. So who wants to add questions to that list of questions? Councillor Bangry?
When we talk about the nine to 11 committee assignments per month, now, I want to ask, is there two councillors assigned to each committee? And so there are, where we have one councillor assigned to a lot of our committees, are they assigning two councillors?
Okay, councillor, that is a good question, but there are some committees where you have to have two.
Oh, yes.
Depending of the policies that you have, for example, the fire requires two, the Chinook requires two, which is the other one that requires two. I think those are pretty well the two that require two. The county has an excessive amount of committee because they have the villages, and because they also have Water Commission with McGrath, and they have other regional committee assignment that we do not have by the nature of our location.
Okay.
Tell me when we're good to resume, please.
Why don't we have her check in and inform us? And we'll do this. Would that be all right, Mayor?
Councillor, do you want to try to check in, and we'll call you in your hotel room?
Well, I can hear you, I'm following.
You're following, it's because we have all sorts of background noise, and we're wondering if you were hearing us. Okay. So is there something that you want to address right away that may be the best way to go forward with this conversation?
No, I'm just listening.
You're listening?
Yeah.
I'm looking for input. Councillor.
Do you have a, have a question?
Councillor Salk has a question.
So with all of the mean, median, and maximum, the communities that are at the bottom are where you took those numbers from?
No, no. Those are averages for the province. Therefore, AUMAs, averages.
So what's the purpose of the bottom table?
Oh, that little table? So what that table is, and this is, this is a difficult analysis, and let me explain why. We tried to look at this a number of different ways. We compared against the municipalities around us regionally, but we have such a disparity in assessment and revenues. And so what I did is I took a group of municipalities that had within 10% of the same assessment per capita as us. They mostly all happen to be smaller, which tells you we have kind of lower than average assessment per capita.
Right, yeah, because that was going to be my point, isn't it?
Yeah.
You go from Cardston, McGrath, all the way, and then from Troschu down, it's like 1,000 to 406, it's like.
And we, and they have the linear, we don't.
I was trying to understand, how do you evaluate this? Because it can't be, I was frustrated trying to do it on population. Because if you look at communities of population the same as us, the ability to raise funds is hundreds of percent different. So then I looked at assessment totals that were relatively the same. The problem is, like, for example, Athabasca and the town of Cardston, we have almost identical total residential assessment. We're almost bang on the same. On the commercial side, it's a completely different ballgame.
At Pinchuk Creek is the same story.
Commercial assessment that the town does, so I thought, okay, well, that's not a great comparison. So I just thought, what does it look like on assessment per capita? The ability to raise money based on per person. It's maybe not the best metric at all, and it was really telling that we have, we're really at the top of the charts on almost every, on the size-wise for most communities. So we just have a low assessment per capita because we're phenomenal residents.
Because, if I might.
Go ahead.
So the table, I think, that you created back in November of 2018 compares us to all the communities around us, which is, again, an interesting exercise.
Yeah, it is.
And in light of the report we had on municipality, it's becoming even a more interesting exercise, to tell you the truth. So I think what we need to look at is try to maybe address that notions of those committee works and the remuneration, because I think that is where the issue is for us.
The thing you've got to recognize also is the county has their extras, like their life insurance and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, they have perks, we don't have, they have cell phone, et cetera.
That's right, included in their, in their.
Yeah, they have life insurance, you're exactly correct.
Yeah, and so that can mean quite a bit of difference.
Yeah, they have medical, and they have insurance, you're right.
But their base salary is still higher.
Yeah, it is. Yes, it is.
Significant.
Yeah, and by the way, they voted two weeks ago a 5% rollback, the same as TIBR. But that's irrelevant to our discussion at this point. I really think what we need to look at is, what do we do with that without impacting the taxes in a time of restraint? Councillor Brown?
So I'm trying to figure out where, when you look at Raymond and Cardston comparison, their councillors, is that their wages, $26,169? Average? And we're at $12,831, so they're about two and a half times.
Councillor, you're comparing, you're comparing to something that really, when you look at all the towns, is off the chart.
They're an anomaly.
They're a total anomaly from a statistical perspective. You would trim off the low villages, you would trim off the very top, they're off the chart. And right now, what they're doing, they're cutting positions, and cutting the managerial position in their departments. So somebody is suffering here. Ask councillor Court, he knows all about it.
I'm not sure if that's coming out of their council pay, the reason they're cutting these people, but.
No, it's coming out of general revenue salaries. So that's not good either.
They're in debt.
Right. So is there wiggle room? There is. But what is that wiggle room?
If we maintain status quo?
I'm a little confused on just one thing, like, for example, this month, it's not every month, we've had three meetings on ICF. Do we claim on those meetings?
Okay, so you're bringing up an excellent point, councillor, because that is one that is exactly part of one of the points I have there. Right now, when we have assigned the committee, we have put the ICF under the umbrella of the IMP. So in consequence, it, because IMP doesn't meet regularly, sometime once a month, sometime once every three months, depending on the need, the other one, the ICF, was the one was the filler. So under that parameter, I thought, well, we have normally a meeting a month, that is pretty well what our rate of meetings are. Therefore, if we don't have an IMP meeting, the ICF would take the place of it. But it's not the way you and councillor Salk interpreted it, because up to now, we had it as a per diem.
It's a full-day meeting most of the time.
Right. And so that is a good question, this is why I'm saying, should those subcommittees that are extremely long, like Community Future or the ICF, when we work for eight hours, should there still be the per diem?
Okay. Councillor Drew and myself serve on the Chinook Foundation. I don't care how I have directed that meeting, we're in that meeting for a minimum three and a half hours. This, once a month. And then when you look at your per diem claim, it says one to four hours is a half-day per diem. But I don't think we've ever claimed that, excepting when we were going over the contract.
It's your assigned committee, right?
Even the time involved.
So. That's time from over there for two hours.
So. Are those, maybe, let's try to figure out what we want to do there then. If we have a subcommittee part of a committee, if the committee does not meet every month, could that subcommittee, one subcommittee meeting, fill in that monthly requirement for which we are paid quarterly? And the rest be paid per diem? Would that be a fair way to look at it?
It depends if that subcommittee lasts eight hours.
But for the subcommittee eight hours, you get per policy, if it's more than four hours, you claim a half-day, no matter what.
Well, in the case of three different meetings this month, it was probably total about nine or 10 hours, whatever we did for the last three meetings, eight or nine, or whatever it is, how do we, how do we work that then?
Okay, did you have an IMP meeting this month?
No.
Okay, so one of the meetings that represents four hours, represents that meeting that you missed, and the rest should be claimed per diem, if we want to go that route.
So if they're two separate meetings, do you complain, do you claim for both those separate meetings? Like, we had a four-hour meeting, and then we had an hour and a half, two-hour meeting, then we had a three-hour meeting, how do we work that? If one of them is IMP.
So that's a good question.
One of them's IMP, fine, but that's not a problem.
Well, that is, that is a very good question. For myself, I have not claimed anything because I put it under, I had no IMP, and that's good. But the rest is a good question. What do we do with those extra beds? You should be compensated for it, it would be fair.
I don't generally go to the AGM that they have on a Saturday over here. Or not an AGM, but they have their little workshop thing on a Saturday, because that means I'll be claiming on it, I just, you know. So there's, so something like that, if the History Society has a yearly get-together workshop, do I go and claim for that? Or is that part of my?
Well, there's a little bit of discretion there too, right? For example, when I was on South Gru, the, and we had sometime four meetings, and you probably have sometime long meetings too, we had AGM. Well, if it was the same month as we had a regular meeting, then I would claim for that extra meeting. So, because now you're above the one meeting per month. What we need to remember is that the quarterly, the quarterly that you have paid represents one meeting per month. That is what it covers, in average, one meeting per month.
Per committee that you're on.
Right. That's what it covers. So the problem and the dissatisfaction that I can hear is, wait a minute, we have three meetings, what do I do with that? How do I claim for that? Or this meeting was eight hours, now how do I claim for that? Or can I claim for it? And that's fair, those are good questions.
And I look at some of the meetings I have, I mean, I might go to a library board meeting, one meeting it might last an hour and a half, next meeting might be 45 minutes.
And this is why we have one to four hours.
And then I'll go to a Southwest meeting, because I don't know where I'm going to be going. You know, from month to month, it's a different place. So it could range anywhere from, it's never any less than four hours, and sometimes five and a half to six hours. And the same with the library, you know, and it's, they're always four and a half to five and a half hours.
Claim, councillor Barnes, from the time you leave your house to the other meeting and back?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're getting paid for mileage, right?
Yeah. No, I understand that, I'm just saying the meeting, the meeting itself is, you know, you got to get there, right? So you've still got, there's still time away from home. And so, anyways, I'm just looking at, when you were talking about the, this is, is this including the? this including the monthly, the, the counselor's price here, this yearly fee? Is that including your monthlies, or the, I mean, the quarterly?
That's true.
The average payment altogether per year.
Yeah.
As per the paper that I give you, represents everything.
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 All right.
And this, this is why I'm saying, if there's such difference between the mean and what we're getting, it has to be because of committees. It can't be anything else. Because anywhere else, we're higher than the mean, we're higher. So the only thing is, is the remuneration for those quarterly.
For the quarterly, that's kind of where I'm coming from as well.
That is where the problem is.
Where the increase probably should be, is in that quarterly. And whatever it has to be.
A town which will remain unwound, when I was looking at it, there was, this is a few years ago, there was, with their counselors, it was anywhere from 18,000 to $36,000.
Yeah.
So why is that gap of, is one working twice as hard, or are they on a different committees, or?
Well, it's exactly what it is. If they're out of town, they have a certain rate per diem that they apply right away. It's not part of their committees per se. There are many towns that pay a rate for every, every meeting you go to.
Yeah.
For example, we had a fellow from Kutsa used to come at the Waste Authority. Every time to the meeting for that Waste Authority, he could claim $100. It's all what he could claim, he did not have any quarterly, that's all what he had.
Claimed meetings then.
So, that was, and I was shocked, I thought, that's all what you get? Yeah, that's what we.
So if we're going to go with the increase on the quarterly, what percentage are you suggesting? Is there a suggestion?
Am I, do you suggest? You, you wrote me, you wrote to me, the library reported there's success for increase right there.
I know what you're talking about.
One and a half percent, right?
Well, that's, that's a budget, that's not a person that's, they're getting something, that's a, that's their budget item, I understand that.
Yeah, but for us, it's a budget item too, right?
Take Counselor Silk with the, with the waste management. Do you have a, are you, are, have you been assigned a special committee?
He, on two committees beside that, so now he doesn't have one meeting, he has meeting per month.
Three meetings per month.
Now, let me, let me just clarify with the waste, most of our, like, policy or HR committee meetings are in conjunction with.
With the meeting.
With the meeting, so therefore, we just like, yeah.
Okay.
It's in.
So it's within the timeframe of one to four.
You're going, yeah, you're going two hours in a meeting, and then an hour to an hour and a half before that, you have your policies.
So here is my concern about increasing the, the quarterly uniform. It doesn't help a Counselor Silk that does work and be.
That's right.
Because now, he may have 11 or 12 committees that he does work for and have, and he gets less per committee than somebody who has four or five committee. That seems totally illogical. That to me is illogical. So maybe what needs to be done is look at these, and is anything else about the base should be getting proper compensation.
I, I believe a lot of ways, and I don't, by the way, I'll, because I don't care how this goes, doesn't matter to me, but one thing I think the, the current policy is, is it doesn't define what the quarterly is for very well. So for example, if you all knew that regardless of your committee, quarterly was covering, and I'm just throwing it out, one meeting a month per committee, and you know what, if you're on level segregation and you meet once a year, so be it, that's fine, right? But then anytime you have above and beyond that, it is subject to a per diem.
That's the way it should be written.
But it's not clear that way.
I agree.
It is clear that if you're on a subcommittee, or if your committee meets once a month, then at your discretion, you can do it. But nowhere do we define what the quarterly paying you for. And maybe the answer is simply, it is up to 12 meetings a month per, 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 per year per committee, but no more than one per month. So you can't get all 12 in a month.
Right on.
Probably get a per diem per.
Yeah, I probably would say 11 meeting, because in general, not 12 meetings.
Yeah, but that, that seems ambiguous, and that seems to be causing.
The, the problem, because we all have the same, that's right, we had three meetings.
That's a great example, and you're probably going to have a fourth one by the end of the week.
Right. And so, what we do, but I think, in fairness to you all, if you didn't have IMP, take one of those meeting, whichever one you want, and count it as, as your monthly.
So are you saying that we met three times, we should be claiming two of them? Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll throw another wrinkle, and this is for the fun of it. We met as the council, we weren't done by 6:30 or 7:00, then we spent another hour and a, hour and a half to do an ICF for council.
So that's a good point, Counselor, and that's something we need to discuss, because quite often, we do have a few meeting after that, right? And with different type of thing, we may come before, we may come after. I think the policy there speaks to, if you have a council meeting, it's normally four hours, right?
Three hours.
Three hours. So if we are with three hours, is that fair to say, well, we give to something else, or do we want to consider that as something separate? It's a little bit what Counselor Silk said. When I go and I do other work on committees, if it's within that timeframe, I don't claim it, because under that timeframe, I'm there anyways. Here's the same story, we're there anyways. So does 10, or half an hour more, one hour more, if it's within that time?
Again, I'm just throwing things out, one thing to consider potentially is, because we're talking, some of the time of some of these meetings, so is there another clause, if any given committee meeting is over four hours, then the additional time is.
It should be, I agree.
So that's just another way to look at it.
Yeah, we should.
Including travel time?
I, and the policy already does.
It does talk about travel, yeah.
See, you made reference to that with respect to the Shnuk Foundation. And the same is, for instance, Community Futures, like, I can foresee never, ever spending five hours at a community, because you travel to wherever, is always a three and a half to four hour meeting.
Yeah, you guys have very.
And you're, you know, anyway.
So, here's a question that might help administration kind of reframe a little bit what we have. Would we feel comfortable with having administration put a proper defining terms as to what does that quarterly represent? And so that we understand how to claim our per diems? Would that work?
I think you're on the right path, Mayor, because when you try to do comparables with every other community, it's round pegs and square holes, and it's not comparable, and we're trying to see monkey do, and we're not, we got to find something that's agreeable for us taxpayers in this town, so.
So I just wanted to throw out, when, when it first was assigned to the, the library board, the library was my assignment, and then there was another person from, who was assigned to the Shnuk Arch. And then we did some looking around, we found out that the, the person who represents the, the library board is supposed to be the Shnuk Arch. So I was thrown with an extra four meeting here in there. And so, when, at the, I was on there, I was getting a per diem for that, and then I was told, no, I don't get it anymore.
Okay, so that is another.
And that's a five hour turnaround, usually.
Okay. That is another thing that Jeff, if you, because that's become more complicated, because now that's not replacing a meeting, a meeting missed, it represents additional meetings, that's quarterly, but not weekly.
And the other, there's one other thing there, is I was told that I wasn't to claim mileys, that the, the Shnuk Arch to pay my mileage as well. So I've never claimed mileys down for the library.
They should pay you.
Well, they pay, they don't pay our rate, but they, they do.
Oh, yeah, but they pay you.
They do, because the town doesn't.
Well, I'm glad.
Then some of the other, like, I know the other county, the people from, I mean, we have 30 or 40 people at that meeting, and I've asked around, and they say, the town pays it. So the, the library doesn't pay at all.
Maybe the town doesn't pay as much as we do in requisition.
I'm just throwing that out there, telling you.
I know, not a higher requisition in this province.
For the Shnuk Arch?
Library.
Yeah. So Mayor, and just to clarify too, like, we've done this in the past, where if we are elected to, for instance, like, the South Grove Executive, which is over and above the South Grove assignment, then that was a motion of council.
Yep.
And that should be continued in that same vein, where.
Yeah, that's changed.
We should come back to council and say that.
Yeah, yeah. Because I really think, you know, there are people like you.
Uh-oh.
Who like to, no, it's true, Counselor, you. An eager beaver, you have time in your hand, and you like to build all sorts of questions, and, and that's your little hut. And yet there's madness behind your desire to do that, and I understand where you're going with that. It's the good of the town, I totally get you. And in order to get for the good of the, the higher up you go, the more closer to the understanding of how work and could benefit us. I totally understand your madness. But since we agreed to your madness, we also agreed to pay for it and compensate properly.
But just, Mayor.
No.
The only reason I'm on Community Futures is to squeeze every dime out of that organization, the town.
Did I not figure that one out?
I, I think related to this, start this with the, the policy, is we, you have assigned these, we saw this with ICF, it's, it's an exact example of it, where ICF isn't actually an assigned committee.
It's a head dog.
But there needs to be some debate whether it should be or not, once the negotiation is settled, and it's really just a once a year meeting.
Right.
Exactly.
And probably fits nicely as the assigned committee now.
Right.
So we have to have something in there that allows for some element to these committees to say, okay, well, you know, this might be something different than it is. So you three interpreted the definition of that assignment differently, I watched it.
Yeah.
Because it was poorly defined in the first place.
Right.
So we, we've got to account for that a little bit, I think, all three of you interpreted that assignment, because of the frequency and the intensity of those meetings.
Then, then this is a misunderstanding of mine, the other counselors. I thought that when we got that grant to go into collaboration, that that grant cover.
It doesn't cover nothing.
Just for the, this comes as a facilitator.
No, no.
Facitator.
And if you want to talk about lengths of meeting, just to give you a sense, ICF, they started at 8:00 in the morning with their council meeting, they finished at 4:00, and entertain us for another four hours. That's the way.
PP, I don't even think we can assign labor or per diems, I think that's an ineligible expense on.
So, I mean, yeah, they have a little bit of different than we have. So, Counselor, would that be, first step, a good way to go? Let's try to see what it does for us, and then let's try to understand the impact on the budget altogether. Because once we understand that, we'll be a little bit closer to, to decide how to assign a figure.
Can I just read back, oh, go ahead, Counselor.
Just to clarify, so, one meeting a month, if it's more than one meeting a month, you claim?
Claim. If, if your meeting is an, and that's all what you have, well, the rest is 10 months of freebies, so you're lucky.
I understand that, yeah.
And you don't need to put them in a pool and say, oh, no, we don't ask you to fill that pool.
Much clearer now for me.
Is that clear?
Yeah.
Can I just summarize mine also?
Please.
I think you did most of the work for me there, but. The definition of quarterly needs worked out somehow, so we all know exactly what it contains, quarterly payment. Any meetings, even if they're under your assignment, and one per month, that's not once in that month, a per diem is appropriate. So even if they're assigned to you, but they meet more than once in the month. If that regular meeting exceeds four hours, including travel, a per diem for that extra time is also.
Yeah.
We can talk about what that looks like as we get into the details, you know, if you go 30 minutes over, is that a half day per diem? You know, we can work out those details.
And.
What committees are assigned, and then what committees would be subject to initially extra per diem?
Right. Especially those subcommittee, we need to address it, no subcommittee.
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
I think we can work that through pretty easy.
Okay. Here was another question from Counselor Cord, and it was a good one. You go to a meeting, you only work maybe four hours, one hour, whatever, and then you have another meeting that month, another hour or something. Do you still claim separately the thing as being meetings? Yes, I would say that would fit the bill. You don't, yeah, I would say, don't combine.
Justice Brown's not on there, by the way, anymore.
Yeah, so don't, don't combine the amount you had days, you took your car two days, got off your house two days, and that's fair. Does that make sense? Okay. It clarifies also my thinking, because very often, I say I'll forget the per diem, because I have no time to be bothered with it. And so, yeah.
You didn't understand it either.
No, I didn't. So, this is why I wrote the questions.
Good.
Okay? Because I thought that might help us with the discussion. Thank you so much, and I will allow us to, to fix that. I couldn't understand it any better than you could.
Good, glad to hear that.
Counselor Brown's call keeps dropping, and so she's not sure where to go with that.
Okay.
So she said, just go on, and then she.
Okay, so that's good. Thank you, counselors, that was an excellent discussion. I think we finally clarified all what was in muddy water. Relation policies had not been revised in a long time, six years. And for six years, we didn't submit, because what did? Go ahead.
Just, so, this is actually a good time, like, with Counselor Brown and her FCSS, those come to council, same with, if he's got a library thing up in wherever, the council for approval, that'll be written in there and understood as well?
Yeah.
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 If council pays to bring.
We've got some stuff around that.